Okay, good evening to everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the October tenth, two thousand and seventeen regularly scheduled meeting of the Alexander Board of Education to order. And I'd ask for everyone to recognize a moment of silence before we get started with our meeting. We have East Alexander Middle School reporting to us today, and we have two students from East, Abigail Hodges and Gracie Bentley. Abigail Hodges is the daughter of Juanita Brown and Kevin Hodges, and Gracie Bentley is the daughter of Randall and Lisa Bentley, and they're gonna lead us in the pledge. Do y'all wanna come on up?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you ladies, you did a great job.
Thank you.
All right, board members, you've had, thank you all for coming. You've had a chance to look over the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Send me.
The motion to second any discussion additions or deletions? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously, and now I'd like to recognize Dr. Jennifer Hefner for our awards, our honors and recognition portion.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. It's always a pleasure to present the honors and recognition portion of the board meeting. Tonight, we recognize our North Carolina Farm to School Art Contest winners, and at this time, I would like for Board Member Odom and his daughter Zoe to come up and give me some assistance, okay? The North Carolina Farm to School Program was formed in nineteen ninety-seven by the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services Food Distribution and Marketing Divisions and the U.S. Department of Defense Produce Merchandising Office to develop a system for North Carolina schools across the state to receive fresh produce grown by local farmers. All school districts in North Carolina are encouraged to participate in the North Carolina Farm to School Program. Deliveries now include strawberries, watermelons, cantaloupes, several variety of apples, slicing and grape tomatoes, sweet potatoes, red and green cabbage, broccoli, sweet potato sticks, blueberries, and more. And all of these items are grown on North Carolina farms. To promote North Carolina Farm to School and to feature student artwork, the calendar contest highlights the diversity of agriculture throughout the state. Tonight, we recognize two Hidnite Elementary students, and both of these students were in Ms. Carolyn Hart's fourth grade classroom when they submitted their artwork. A special thank you is extended to Mrs. Hart for her coordination of this competition for her students. First off, we have Brennan Harold, who is now a fifth grade student at Hidnite Elementary. Brennan was selected as a finalist in the competition. Brennan's work is highlighted in the centerfold with twenty-five other finalists. Whoops, wrong page. That's our April. The centerfold, and board members, if Zoe would go ahead and give each of you one of these calendars, it is the North Carolina Farm to School Calendar for seventeen eighteen. This student was a finalist and, as I said, is in the centerfold. We want to congratulate Brennan. He is here this evening with his mom Rebecca Harold, grandmother Gail Armstrong, and brother Gage. Please come forward. Give him a round of applause. And then we're gonna grab a picture up here.
Just come stand right there. Just stand right there.
And Brennan, for the picture, I'm really not the photographer, but how about you open up the calendar to the centerfold where your picture is highlighted, okay? Very good. Aiden Fitzgerald is also a fifth grade student at Hidnite Elementary, and he is the winning artist, highlighted for the month of April two thousand and eighteen in the official North Carolina Farm to School Calendar. And Aiden, the month of April, can you all see? It's highlighted, a big picture. Aiden is here tonight with his mother Tyra Fitzgerald, sister Aria, is that correct? And his stepdad Brandon, so please give him a round of applause. Wonderful, hold it up. Brennan, hold yours up. Thank you for representing our farmers in Alexander County also. Great job.
Miss Mead, can you check and see if anyone signed up for public comment, please? Okay. All right. All right, no one has signed up for public comment, so we're gonna move to our consent Just to let all of you folks know, now's a good time if you wanna sneak out, because we're gonna start the business portion of our meeting, but we really appreciate you coming.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you for coming. Board members, you've had a chance to look over the consent agenda in your packet. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Need to approve.
I have a motion to second any discussion about any of the items? All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Now, we're gonna move on to reports. And I'd recognize Dr. Lisa Harrington, Principal at Alexander Middle School. Your students...
I'm not gonna talk to you, but for thirty seconds tonight. I brought my reinforcements. This is actually a group of teachers who recognized a problem and have started figuring out ways to correct that problem. Is this the clicker, or is there a clicker somewhere, or do I just... It's the big one. I've never seen a clicker like that.
Dr. Griffin's the clicker.
Well, this is a little overview of our problem, or of what we see as a problem. Thirty-three percent of people will not read a book after high school. One in six children who are not reading proficiently in the third grade do not graduate from high school on time, and that's a rate four times greater than proficient readers. And if you notice, that's higher in children from low-income families in rural areas, sorry. Eighty-five percent of juveniles who come into contact with the juvenile court system are functionally illiterate, and forty-five million Americans are also functionally illiterate and cannot read above a fifth-grade level. That's pretty sad. So, along with fifty percent of adults who cannot read a book written on an eighth-grade level, these ladies and gentlemen have decided to tackle that problem and hopefully have results for generations to come, because if parents are not reading to their children, then those children are not reading either. So, just to facilitate a long-term answer to a problem, I'm gonna turn it over to them, and they're gonna talk to you a little bit about what they do at East to try to make that problem a little bit better. They'll have to nod you, Dr. Griffin.
I'm gonna talk about classroom libraries.
Toni, Toni, will each of you introduce yourselves?
I'm Toni Smith, Language Arts, sixth grade. One of the things that we have done is really vamp up our classroom libraries the last couple of years. In order to do that, we have also had to become voracious readers of middle school and young adult literature, so that we are able to recommend books to our students and help bring back the love of reading to our students. Also, one of the things that we have done has been to reorganize our classroom libraries by genres or themes, and this allows the students to be better able to find books that they are interested in and for us to recommend them. Along that line, our librarian, Crystal Mace, undertook the mammoth task of genrefying our library and just finished that, so that the students are able to better find books that they enjoy reading. If they like historical fiction, they will all be in one area instead of scattered all over the fiction area of the library. So, we are very excited about our students being able to go into the library and find more books to interest them and make them lifelong readers.
So, we've just taken the liberty of putting together some pictures of some of our classroom libraries and what they look like. We're trying to shelf somewhere in the realm of six hundred to a thousand titles within classrooms, largely undertaken by purchasing books at thrift stores and relying on donations and bringing stuff from home, Amazon carts stay full all the time, and you can see that we have large and growing classroom libraries that our students are also able to check out from, because our studies have shown us that classrooms with fully stocked classroom libraries actually increase circulation in their media centers as well. And as we were, you can flip to the next one, as we were thinking about the library, we wanted to create kind of a crossover between the library space and between our classroom spaces. So, over the summer, several of us threw out our desk completely and...
Not there in storage.
No. We threw the libraries, classrooms, but into a different location. And spent the summer begging for donations and scouring thrift stores and painting and sanding and doing all sorts of stuff to create very flexible environments that were more inviting for our students and invite them to pull up a book and sit down and read and be relaxed and have some flexibility in the environment that they can choose.
And that was Christie Jewelsrude?
Yes, Christie Jewelsrude, eighth grade Language Arts.
I'm Misha Russell. I teach seventh grade Language Arts and Social Studies, and I have been amazed, we've worked on with our students, teaching them strategies to not only enjoy the reading, find books that they like, but also pull apart the text, make connections, visually imagine what they're reading, and some of the things that they're capable of doing are quite amazing.
I'm Jordan Stone, and I teach seventh grade English at East. We, Misha and I have decided that we were gonna try something a little different this year, and through that, we have heard multiple occasions, when are we gonna start reading the book again? And that's because we've, with Engage New York, we've read about five chapters of our novel, A Long Walk to Water, and pulled in so much informational text about the tribes in Africa that relate to this novel, that they're very interested in that background knowledge, but they really wanna know what happens. And so, we're digging in and pulling all that apart, and we just started today with the book, and I got several emails about how excited we were, and homework is being done, the book is being read. I don't see things being left in my classroom, they're taking it home, and I just get random emails on the weekend about what's going on in our novel. So, it's just really exciting, the things that I'm seeing.
Would you go to the former slide, please? Thank you. I'm Travis Crowder. I am a seventh grade English teacher at East. I also teach social studies, and these are two pictures from my classroom library. The statistics about reading and non-reading are sobering, and one of the ones that really struck me was that for children in poverty, there is one book per three hundred children, and that is quite sobering for me. And one of the things that I have really, I've really worked hard to do along with all of these other fantastic English teachers, is provide access. Students who have access to books, who are given choice in their reading lives, they become readers, but they also need adults in their lives who are going to read and talk about books with them. And if they don't have those two things, then them becoming voracious readers, them ever picking up a book once they leave from our school system is going to be next to none. And unless we step up to the task and try to inspire some form of book love in them, we fail them. And I'm glad to be a part of these English teachers and try to inspire book love in our schools, or in our students in Alexander County schools.
It's back to me. Told you it'd be short and sweet. But if you notice, they were all grade levels represented. There are several different philosophies, educational philosophies, or maybe that's not the correct way to say that, but anyway. But the commonalities are teaching kids to read and to love to read. And I've seen this group, along with a couple of people who couldn't be here, they have grown together because they've started having those conversations across grade levels. They all get together. I see them all mixed and matched up at different places in the building, just having conversations about how they can help kids and how they can get them to love books. I also see them talking to kids about, what book are you reading now? Tell me about it. Kids will go to them and say, I'm not quite liking this book, so they help them find books. They have read all books. I am not there, believe me, but I go ask them what I need to read next. They've recommended a couple, but they know what to recommend to students. So, that's one thing I just wanna brag about at East. There are lots of things I love about East, and this is one group that I'm extremely proud of. So, I think you might see a difference in that. Okay, thank you.
Great job. Fabulous. And I'm really glad you explained genrefying, because I've never seen that word. I'm a voracious reader, never seen that word before in my life.
It's like a book. A book, so there you go.
It's great, thank you very much.
I've never, never seen that word. I'd like to recognize Macy Jones, Head Start Director for our end-of-year program information report.
Good evening. I wanted to tell Dr. Harrington that what they're doing is working, because my niece, Carrie, was with her constantly and talks about the library and the teachers at East Junior High. So, she's a seventh grade parent there, so it's working. And I'm here to talk with you about the program information report. Every year, we are required to submit information through the Head Start system to the federal office in Atlanta that talks about the things that our program has done during previous year. It talks about the services that we provide to children, and we have to give data on our staff, even down to the ethnicity, down to whether we are doing our best to hire qualified former Head Start parents. That is something that Head Start likes for us to do. Parents are qualified for positions that are available, they would like to see us employ those, to show that we've been successful and that they've been successful. So, you should have four different reports that were sent to you. Tonight, I'm just addressing the report that is called the roll-up report, or the grant level summary report, if you want to pull that up. The other reports are just additional information aggregated and labeled in a different way. There is one report that I would like you to look at later that compares how well we did on the grant level to programs statewide and to programs on a national level. And I'll mention that again whenever I get to some information about dental services. I am not going to go through this through every page, but if you will scroll down to page three, I want to mention on this page that we served forty-eight three-year-old children and sixty-five four-year-old children. So, that means that there were at least sixty children that were eligible to move up to kindergarten. Now, whether they actually entered into our system or moved out of the county, that's something that we have not tracked, but as I was looking at this, I thought, maybe we need to start seeing where our small ones are going to, because there's a lot of moving with some of our families. The types of eligibility, we served fourteen children that were classified as foster children, and then we served sixteen children that were classified as being homeless. That means that they could be living with parents, with grandparents, with someone that is not their biological parent, or it means that they don't have a permanent address. So, that's what that means as well. They don't have a permanent address. And then, of course, we can serve ten percent of our children who meet over income guidelines. If you'll look below, you'll see that we had twenty-one children that returned for the second year, and we served three or eleven children that had returned for three or more years. And Jeremy Guyer is our Family and Community Partnerships Manager, and he and the advocates looked diligently from March until summer to secure those sixty-some children that have to be replaced, because our funded enrollment is one hundred. If you'll look on page four, you'll see that it's broken down by race and ethnicity, and then you'll see below that what languages the families speak. I'm not going to go through all of that. If you'll go on over to page six, you'll see that of our thirty-two staff, we have six that are former Head Start parents. We just, Ashley Elder just moved on to a position with the Partnership for Children, Ashley was a Head Start parent. So, we have several who fit this category. We have, just had ten volunteers, according to this. I note that I saw more than ten people in and out of our classrooms, so I'm not really sure what's going on here, so I made a note that this is something that we need to work on. We need to increase the number of volunteers that are coming in and out of our classroom. On page seven, it talks about the staff education. All of our teachers have four-year degrees, and as teachers have resigned or moved on or retired or whatever it may be, we try to replace those people with degrees in birth to kindergarten. And then, we have teacher assistants who are, have associates or are working on associates. So, if you will go on over to page, or scroll down to page fourteen, I'll give you a moment to get there. Health services. At the beginning of the year, we had a hundred and four children that were enrolled in Medicaid or CHIP, that's health insurance, and by the end of the year, we had a hundred and nine children that were enrolled. The goal is to make sure that every child leaves our program with a medical or dental home. If they come in without one, the goal is to make sure when they leave, that they leave with a medical or dental home. And state standards say that whenever our licensing consultant comes to review our records, we can be written out of compliance if the parent has not designated an emergency room or a hospital or a family doctor or a dentist. And we have forty-five days to get all of our children health screenings, and then we have thirty days for the NC prepay children to have their health screenings in place, because we're visited by a licensing consultant within the first thirty days for all of our NC prepay classrooms. That's not noted in this report, that's just for FYI. The number of children with continuous accessible care, you'll see that we had a hundred and thirteen children that left the program with providers. You'll see that the EPSDT, that stands for Early Periodic Screening and Diagnostics and Treatment Program, and we work with the Health Department to make sure that children are up to date on their well visits. As children learn better when they are healthy and well. On page fifteen, you'll see that a hundred and seven children, this number C eleven, the number of children who have been determined by a healthcare professional to be up to date on all immunizations. At the beginning of the year, we had a hundred and seven children that were up to date, by the end of the year, a hundred and twelve. So, this number does include children that left us at some point during the year. When they left us, they were up to date. So, we work closely with the Health Department and with our parents to make sure that when children are ready to enter kindergarten, that they have had all the immunizations that they need, and we share that with the teachers and with principals whenever they ask for that information. And again, all of our children left with a dental home. We are above the state average in meeting this requirement. The state average is eighty-eight point five percent, and the national average is ninety-two point six, and we were at a hundred percent. And you can see that on your report. Parents must consent for mental health services. I'm on page sixteen, and we referred fourteen children for mental health services. Some of them have experienced some kind of trauma, or just may need some help and guidance with self-regulation, and just have someone to listen to them. I'm not going to go through the list of categories of disabilities, that's on page seventeen, but we did serve twenty-one children with IEPs, Individualized Education Plans, and we had six to enter the program with a plan, and during the year, we identified fifteen more. We work closely with the Exceptional Children's Director and with Dr. Hilton and with Sharman, and we meet monthly, and Sharman is part of our Policy Council, and she's also part of our Student Support Team. So, we talk about these children and their needs. Go on over to page eighteen, talks about the number of families that we serve. This is always an interesting part to me. We had a total of one hundred and three families, and this section just breaks down whether they are two-parent families, single-parent families, if a child is living with their parents, their grandparents, other relatives, or in foster care, and then it breaks it down even farther to indicate whether the mother is the head of the household, or the father is the head of the household, and you see the numbers there. Something else that I've noticed with employment is that we have some military families. We have four parents or guardians that are members of the United States Military or on active duty, and then we have eight that are veterans of the United States Military. Page twenty, six of our parents have an advanced degree or a baccalaureate degree, and twenty-one of our parents have associate degrees or vocational school. The number that concerns me on page twenty, C forty-nine, is that we had thirty-six families, or someone in a family that does not have a GED or high school diploma. So, now that we know this, if those families have returned, then we need to target those families and find out what we can do to... families and find out what we can do to move them toward getting that degree or that diploma. And then on page twenty-one, again, that's just the numbers for homelessness and foster care. And again, I'm not going to go through the other three reports. You have those there for your review, but you can see that it's a pretty detailed report, and it asks for the same information several ways. And all year long, we are inputting information into what we call the Child Plus System. That's our data tracking system for Head Start. Any questions for me?
Oh, impressive as always. You don't need action on this.
I don't need any action. I'm just supposed to make sure that you have this information, and then next month, I will probably report to you our school readiness outcomes, and that shows the growth and the gains of our children in about eight different domains.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Macy.
I'll now recognize Dr. Jennifer Hefner for the Superintendent's Report.
Board members, this is a part of your agenda. It has been attached, if you want to read along with me. I wanted to let you know a settlement for the repairs to the Sugarloaf Fire Department Building has been reached with Gladfelter Claims Management Incorporated. Moss Marlowe will be doing the repairs for the school system. Materials have been ordered, and work is scheduled to begin on the fire department in three and a half to four weeks. The second bullet, our community partner thank you reception, is quickly approaching. Our community partners will be thanked with a reception and brief ceremony on Monday, October sixteenth, beginning at six in the auditorium lobby. Presentations will be made to those in attendance following the reception in the lobby, and I hope all board members can attend this special event on Monday. For those board members in attendance, I will recruit you to help with making the presentation of those certificates. So please mark your calendars. The North Carolina School Board Association Annual Conference for Board Member Development is scheduled for November thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth at the Sheraton Greensboro at Four Seasons. Deborah Watts, Vice Chairman Scott Bowman, and I plan to attend this state conference. National School Lunch Week kicked off yesterday. The theme, Recipes for Success, is an opportunity to share the ingredients that make the program a success, from farm to school to culinary arts training to student taste test. Students will get a chance to vote for new school lunch items they would like to see on the menu in November and December. The possible new items come from recipes developed by chefs for the K-12 Culinary Institute. Alexander County currently has six chef ambassadors from the K-12 Culinary Institute on staff. School lunches are healthier than ever, with more fruits and vegetables, whole grains, and less fat and sodium. National School Lunch Week helps us educate parents and students about all the benefits of our lunch program and the appealing choices we offer. Bullet number five, the Taylorsville Apple Festival is scheduled for Saturday, October twenty-first. As you know, the proceeds of this event are donated to our schools' benevolence funds. Please put this fun-filled event on your calendar and plan to come out on the twenty-first and support this annual event. Bullet number six, the Totals Are In for the Canned Food Drive. A total of forty-five thousand two hundred seventeen cans of food were collected at our elementary schools last week as part of the annual Fall Canned Food Drive. The total collected last year, total thirty-seven thousand nine hundred ninety-eight. So we surpassed that by a lot of cans of food. I'm going to provide additional details for each school's collection in my weekly update, but I want to thank each of our elementary schools for supporting the Christian Crisis Center and those that are in need of food within the community through this generous collection. Bullet number six, Sports Hall of Fame Tickets are being sold for thirty dollars each. This event is scheduled for Monday, November twentieth, beginning at six at McLendon's Restaurant. The following will be inducted into the class of two thousand seventeen Sports Hall of Fame. Reba Hefner-Bolick, Alexander A.Y. Yoder, and Del Yount. Laura Thomas-Lawes and Jim Poole will be inducted posthumously. Tickets can be purchased at a variety of locations, including the Board of Education. And lastly, I am working with Sherry Long at the Western Piedmont Council of Government to write a grant to run SUER to Stony Point Elementary School. I was contacted by Sherry on August thirty-first, and she stated that after researching a community development block grant infrastructure program for schools, she felt like Stony Point Elementary School would possibly be eligible to apply for funding for SUER. I have been working with Andy Palmer, the school's principal, to collect household information for students and staff, and it is looking promising. Applications for the grant are due by November first and require a public hearing to be held by the Alexander County Commissioners. This public hearing was scheduled at the last Commissioners' Meeting for October twenty-third at Stony Point. Five grants will be awarded to various schools throughout the state, and this would be a great project for Stony Point. Sherry Long anticipates the cost for the needed infrastructure to be close to one million dollars. Please mark your calendar for that public hearing, October twenty-third at six. Do you have any questions?
And that is at Stony Point?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Hefner. We're going to move on to new business, and I'm going to recognize Harry Schrum of the Facilities Committee Chairman to discuss the Sugarloaf Fire Department lease.
As you remember, we voted in September to extend the current lease for an additional six months, and we have offered that to the Sugarloaf Fire Department, and their Board of Directors has approved that. So I guess now we need action to follow through with signing the lease for them to sign at their next board meeting.
Do I have a motion to execute the lease agreement as we discussed extending the lease with Sugarloaf Volunteer Fire Department for six months? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your work on that. Now, I'd recognize Dr. Betsy Curry, Associate Superintendent of Curriculum for our School Improvement Plans, of which this is just a part.
Yes. Chairman, for its key members of the board, I have provided you with school improvement plans and comprehensive needs assessments for the schools with which the school is present in the future schools. And I just have to tell you that our schools, the staff, school improvement, we've been doing this for the last, really more like six months, even though they finalized their data assessments this summer, to use that to form school improvement. And then to you for, and they are working documents, so they'll continue to be revised and upgraded, but I'm very, very proud of the work that we need to do to these documents.
They're very comprehensive, and I do appreciate breaking them up so we don't have to tackle all twelve. That was very helpful, because they are rather detailed. So, board members, we need to take action on this, and I know everybody's had a chance to, or I hope everybody's had a chance to review that. Do I have a motion to approve the comprehensive needs assessments and the school improvement plans from each of our campuses as they've been presented to us for review? Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion, questions, comments from anyone?
I just commend the amazing amount of work that went into those. And just seeing East present tonight, that they saw a need, they did something about it, that says a lot about our staff.
It does. I think that this process is one of several things that have occurred fairly recently where our staff is really beginning to feel empowered. And despite some bumps in the road, we just keep having those conversations, let's problem solve this, let's problem solve this, how can we make this work? We can't just say, oh, well, as many, this is what it is, but how can we make this work? And they're very, very resourceful, and I'm very grateful. I got to spend the day with the ELA teachers today from the middle schools, and it was just a great day.
Good.
Thank you.
I need, I've got a motion, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Now, I'd recognize Dr. Robin Hilton, Director of the Exceptional Children's Programs for Title One, Two, Title, is it Titles One, Two, and Three Plans?
Well, now, we're Title One, Title Two, Title Three, and Title Four. So, yes. So I wanted to, just a little bit of explaining, just to remind you kind of about each funding source, so you're familiar. Title One, you know, is an allotment based on free and reduced lunch. There is a funding formula that, we're not given the formula, of course, DBI has that, but they take into free and reduced lunch, and they look at school enrollment, and that amount rolls out. All of our elementary schools are Title One schools, Bethlehem being targeted assistance. And the reason Bethlehem's targeted assistance is because they're below forty percent. They still receive funding, but what targeted assistance does, it makes it a little more narrow to how they can spend their money. But all the rest of elementary schools, I think several years ago here, it was decided to really focus in on the elementary schools and try to get those children up and working on, especially the reading and math, that's where they'll get some other schools. I'm sure you've heard of ESSA, if you've watched the news at all, that actually Title One started around nineteen sixty-four, but through the Obama Administration and even like into today, they have refined and continued to refine the ESSA school life programs. And working with Betsy, it's really been helpful for the school improvement plans, and a needs assessment is truly driving all of the Title One plans now. And it's required by a school to put in their Title One plan, what components are they addressing, really all of these plans. So it doesn't make triple work for people. They can identify the need, use, put the money where the need is. So I'll give you a few things. Dr. Can you go on to the next one? This was our total allotment beforehand. And then I broke it down for you. I thought it might be interesting for you to see. Taylor School is what's called a CIP school still, and what that means is every student gets free breakfast and free lunch. And what that's based on is you look at the gap between the number of kids that don't get free reduced lunch and the ones that qualify. If the gap is small, then there's a multiplier, and we work with Sherry on that, and there's a multiplier, and if the gap is not too large, then we can pick up that extra. If the gap is too large, then you can't afford to do that. So right now in our district, the only school that can make that is Taylor School, and you can see what their total allocation is. You see where it says PPA, that's per pupil allotment, so we take a few things off of the top, and that'll be in this presentation too, and then we break out the rest of the money for school. So actually, when you come down to seven hundred and seventeen dollars per student, the schools have quite a bit of money to put towards other initiatives at their school. Now, they are paying a teacher or two, some are paying another, like reading specialists. There's a lot of different uses for that. And I did not print off every school's plan for you, but I did have them with me if anybody has a particular interest that you want to see a school, this particular school, another parent has questioned you about it, I did bring that with me. Some of the things that Title One funds do support, teachers, assistants, interventionists, instructional supplies, library books, positive behavior support, there's still a lot of software, computer equipment, your subs for grade level planning. The two newest things right now in Title One are homeless and foster care. We are required now to set aside money. I did a little research today, because I'm doing homeless and foster care now too. And so every, almost every day, and I told Dr. Hefner this today, almost every day, we have children that are identified homeless. We, right now, I was trying to think, what is this, maybe like six and a half weeks into school, we have twenty-six children that are already identified homeless. Last year, we had a total of fifty-seven. So we have twenty-six now. I mean, we'll probably have four times that by the time the end of the year comes. A number of the families, the number one reason people are homeless is, well, the rate, how it happens mainly is they're doubling up. They are, like Macy said, moving in with other family. We've had some very bizarre situations, though. We've had, we had a family move from Vermont that's living in a camper, and they really have not even considered themselves homeless. So that is actually a very strong area that the social workers are handling all of that. And there's a lot of work to be done there, because it's called McKinney-Vento, and that's a federal program, that all has to be documented. Foster care, we have some students that are living in my sister's house in Irel, but they were Hiddonite students, and they moved over there. So we have to work with Irel to get them back to Hiddonite every day. And so you're talking about transportation to the line, and then transportation from Alexander County Line to Hiddonite.
And my sister's house is the name of the, of the agency. It's not really Robin's sister's house, okay?
So originally, they were in...
Some people would honestly hear that and think that.
They were originally in the Caldwell County Shelter, and Jamie Jones, a social worker, did the mileage and the math, and she said it was closer for them to be on the Irel. It's in Trappan, actually, it's closer for them to come from there than it is come all the way from Caldwell. So, you know, sometimes if you did hear a little buzz about social workers, there's a, when you take fifteen counselors and five social workers, there's plenty, plenty to do, plus the mental health piece. All schools are required to use one and a half percent of their allotment for staff development, and most all of them use way more than that for staff development and for parent involvement. It's a one and a half percent requirement for that. So that's why you hear a lot about math night, reading night, and they can also use their money to buy, to buy books and any other manipulatives that a parent can even take home. Those are some of the set-asize that we use off of the top. Those were required, the homeless children use services, the foster care transportation. I really, those were a little bit of a guess. Teresa did homeless last year, Miss Meeks, and we took the number of homeless children and we multiplied it by the per pupil allotment, and so we're kind of guessing on that right now, since that's the first year we've done it. Foster care, we will split that, we will split that amount with Irel from that other one. We are covering right now the communities, the two communities and school site coordinators, working with Lindor on that. We are covering one ESL assistant, two regular assistance, and kicking in a little supplies on that, and then dividing the rest of the money out. Title Two, this is training and recruiting teachers, improving teacher and principal quality. A hundred and forty-seven thousand is what we are allotted, that's about what we get every year. That is staff development, that is going to job fairs, that is travel, that is trying to get people to come and visit and see, you know, what our county's all about. So we're working closely with Dr. Curry. You'll hear a lot about the Gizmo training, math foundations, reading foundations, so we're using all of that to support that. There again, I listed some of those things. We also are supporting AIG, the crisis training, some of that with some at-risk money, beginning teacher meetings, wide use for Title Two funds. Title Three, English Language Acquisition, that is what you know as the ESL program. We get a whopping eleven thousand dollars in that, so it's not a whole lot of variety. We were talking about trying to pay that halftime teacher assistant out of it, but I wasn't sure that was going to make, so I did a little re-ramping on that. Then, so we're using that for workshops, travel, but we only have two ESL teachers and then one assistant, and they are traveling all over the county serving the ESL population. Title Four, this is the newest one. It's part of the ESSA. Its goal is to provide high-quality education. We received, we have not received, and I'll just say, we've not received any of this yet. We are, we're waiting on all federal funds, and so we're working closely with this and having on that. But our allotment will be twenty-seven thousand, and they've broken it down into three areas. The well-rounded educational opportunities, safe and healthy students, and effective use of technology. These funds cannot be used to supplant in a way of something we already have going. So if we were thinking about paying half of a nurse or half of a social worker that we already have, we can't do that. We have to, we have to have something new. It has to be something, it could already be something we've been talking about, it's been on our radar, our want list, but it cannot be something that we already, or someone we already have employed. And that gives you just a little bit more about that. If you receive over thirty thousand dollars, you are required to put at least twenty percent in each area. Since we receive right under, we can address safe schools if we want to, and I think there's already a little bit of discussions, maybe going down that road. So I think Dr. Hefner's going to continue talking with some of you about that. So, um, I think Dr. Hefner's gonna continue talking to somebody about that. Okay, that's it. Okay. Does anybody have a question?
The, the, the funds you referenced, the twenty-six homeless children, that's elementary-age children, that-
That's all. Most of them are kinda from the high schools. At the high school, they're called unaccompanied youth.
Okay.
And many of them, um, I'll just give you some examples, uh, like their senior and the rest of the family have left town and so they're custard. Or, um, both parents are in prison and they're just trying to get to college. The majority, um, are high school students and they don't really ask for anything. We have a form and what the advantage for high school student that gets identified on the FABSA, that it's almost an automatic guarantee that they will get money for college. So, I think that Darlene Berry, the social worker, has really tried to work with those kids and help identify them because FABSA opened the first of October. So, um, she's really been trying to kinda pad that in. But, it, it is a, most of the money, um, will go for transportation, but we can use it. If it's, we try to get schools to do for a homeless child whatever they do for other kids. So, if you have a fund for, for, for field trips, I'll say, what would you do for another child that just didn't have enough money? But then there are some things, you know, let's just say the, a high school student needs a TI or whatever fancy calculator and the school can't provide that, that would be something that we would do. So, we're, we're very diligent, we're, we're trying to use our money really wisely, you know, and look at each individual case. Quite a few of the people also that have been homeless, I think, are moving into our area, homeless to homeless. So, most of them didn't have too much of a place to leave or to move to. So, we even had some, after hurricanes in Florida, we've had a couple of families move in with other relatives that live local.
We actually had a, a family inquire from Puerto Rico as well. A mother and, and a couple of children and the brother already lives here. So, I, I'm not sure that they have done that yet, but we had the inquiry.
And yes, we do need justice.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions? We need to approve, um, these plans and I need a motion for Titles One, Two, Three, and Four, hands as presented by Dr. Hilton.
Second.
Can I motion a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
Thanks.
Recognize, um, Mrs. Hefney. Or, or just a couple of first-time readings.
I know that you have missed this and you have been just waiting to get this. The first, um, we have one pol- one new policy up for consideration tonight. Um, this, um, of course, our policy guides are provided to us by the School Board Association and this lists all the policies that deal with stewardship of resources. It's policy, um, eighteen-hundred. And, uh, since this is just simply a list of policies, I would ask for approval on first reading so we can take care of that.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approval of policy eighteen-hundred on the first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And then we have some revisions, I think, that were very minor.
Yes. We have four, four policies up for revision tonight, governing principles, parent involvement, Title One, parent and family engagement, and school safety. And these are very minimal and do not change the, the meaning of the policy and I would ask that we do those on first reading.
We've already talked about getting these off here, so. Um, do I have a motion for revisions under item E of your agenda?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously also. Thank you very much. I know one day you're gonna bring this big long back, it's got all this stuff, but-
Not on the same note that they have to read all those School Improvement Plans, right?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I will recognize Board Member Bridget Ryan for, um, an update on the Alexander County Public Education Foundation Sports Hall of Fame. Ms. Ryan?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Dr. Hefner, for announcing the Sports Hall of Fame information. We do have that upcoming. I know you've all participated in that and we thank you for that. The, uh, reason for the Sports Hall of Fame is to, uh, is the fundraiser, is to raise money for the Education Foundation, which supplies grants, teacher grants to students we, or to teachers. We've also provided grants to students in need at, at times. So, um, this is just a, a way to, to help keep that going and hopefully grow that so that we can provide more opportunities down the road. Um, in the past, we have been able to sponsor the Sports Hall of Fame at various levels, up to five-thousand-dollar sponsorship levels is what we, we have currently and we, we also get other sponsorships from, um, people, from businesses. So, that is, um, up for your consideration tonight if we would like to do that this year.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I would ask that the council consider that we appropriate five-thousand dollars to the Alexander County Public Education Foundation, please. That's the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Another unanimous motion?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do for that, it's a lot of work. Um, now I need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A, one, two, five, and six.
Seven.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in.